Welcome to the Norwood Board of Education Regular Board Meeting, Thursday, May 17, 2018. I hereby call the meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Scott Dracy.
Here.
Bryant.
Here.
Faulkner.
Here.
Atwood.
Here.
Ballard.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item is the approval of, or the adoption of, the agenda.
I'll make the motion to adopt the agenda as it stands.
I'll second.
I have a first, second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion?
Mr. Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second my motion.
I have a first by Mr. Atwood, I'm sorry, by Mr. Bryant, and a second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
And just for the record, Ms. Ballard has joined the meeting and can vote on this issue.
Woo-hoo.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. The next item is administration. We have an item on the list for approval of our new treasurer.
A point of order. So there are two agenda items for approval of minutes, one for the regular board meeting and one for the special board meeting.
Oh, I missed the special board meeting, okay. Thank you. All right. I need an approval for the minutes of the special board meeting that we held on May 17. No, this is May 17. That dates wrong.
Yeah, the, uh...
April 10.
April 10.
Yes.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Bryant. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Now, the next item on the agenda is approval of our new treasurer. We have appointed a new treasurer. Julie, may you please stand up. Julie comes to us with a lot of experience from Williamsburg. Prior to that, you were at Bethel Cane. So we're excited to have her and have her onboard. Thank you very much.
And to finish that, you just need a motion, second, and vote.
Right. May I have a motion for approval of our new treasurer?
Call motion.
Motion by Ms. Amber. Ballard?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Welcome.
Congratulations. Thanks, Julie.
Thanks, Julie. Do you want to say anything?
Sure.
I have a few things I'd just like to share with you about our new treasurer. First of all, welcome. Welcome to Norwood. We're so happy to have you. Mrs. Camp House comes to us with degrees from the University of Cincinnati and Wilmington College, and she has worked in many facets of the Treasurer's Department in multiple school districts. She comes to us well-versed in the present software that we already use, and most importantly, has experience as a Chief Financial Officer. She has received awards for her financial reporting and forecasting from the Ohio Department, from the state of Ohio, and we are very excited to welcome you, Mrs. Camp House. So congratulations to you and welcome. This evening, we'd like to make another presentation, and that is to our Teacher of the Year. Just a few months ago, our community, as well as our teachers, were given the opportunity to nominate, and a committee selected the final representative from our district. And so I'd like to bring forward one of our teachers, our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Marshall Dykes. Will you come forward while I talk about you? Please welcome him. So Mr. Dykes was honored by, actually, teachers all in southwestern Ohio at a Celebrate Excellence Breakfast just last week, and I'd just like to share with you a little bit about what our teachers and what our community thinks about Mr. Dykes. Mr. Dykes, an incredible science teacher who is dedicated to his students' education. He takes the time to build relationships with his students and address their weaknesses and strengths. He is known for having fun, hands-on science classes that the students look forward to each and every day. As an advisor for chess club, he teaches teamwork and social skills while also giving students the confidence to tackle the most challenging science concepts. His classroom is a high-energy space, and he is always striving to improve his teaching. Hands down, one parent wrote, "Mr. Dykes is one of the best teachers out there." Mr. Dykes has brought confidence to his students and helped them to believe in themselves, and this confidence carries through their academic career and into adulthood. His energy is contagious. His enthusiasm for science content makes everyone want to be a learner. Mr. Dykes exemplifies the high level of professionalism and the heart that Sharpsburg Elementary and Norwood City Schools educator possesses. Mr. Dykes is married to Katie, Mrs. Dykes, will you stand, who is also a Norwood educator? And they have two amazing daughters. Claire, will you stand? And Lily, will you stand also? Mr. Dykes has served the Norwood students for 15 years, and it's students like Mr. Dykes that make Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Mr. Dykes.
Thank you so much.
Please stand here. We want to get a photo with you. We want to get a photo with you. So if we could... Oh, did I? Students, teachers like Mr. Dykes. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Can you get all of us to tap in?
One down, one to the right here. Step better.
Way good. Very good. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Let me just do it one more time. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. It's a habit for us to say, "Students like Mr. Dykes make Norwood City Schools great," because that's the next recognition I want to begin. So it's teachers like Mr. Dykes that make Norwood City Schools great, but what really makes Norwood City Schools great are our students. And every month, we like to recognize students selected by teachers from every building in our district. And so students, when I call your name, you're going to come down and get a certificate from our Board President, Mrs. Cherry Scott Dracy, and you'll stand right down here on the carpet while I read about you, so be sure to smile, and you're going to remain here until we have all of the students across the district recognized. We'll take your picture here in this room, and then after that, we'll go out into the main lobby and take more pictures with you and your family. So to begin, Norwood High School's Rising Star students for May are Yazzari Rodriguez. Yazzari, are you here tonight? Come on in. Come on down. Did I say your name correctly, Yazzari?
Yes.
Great. So Yazzari is a very dedicated student who is always striving to do her best in class. If Yazzari misses a day or does not completely understand a concept in class, she comes in for extra help. Yazzari is also a great friend to classmates and always helps other students in class who struggle with the material. She has a positive attitude and is determined to succeed in everything she does. Mr. Lawler is honored to have her in class this year, and he knows that she is going to go on and do great things in this world. Yazzari makes Norwood High School great and makes Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Yazzari. Brendan Lees. Brendan? Brendan is a rising star because of his effort, perseverance, and academic excellence. Brendan demonstrates effort by completing his in-class work, managing time to complete homework, and taking the time to study for his assessments. Brendan's effort and perseverance has led him to his academic success. He's maintained CsR better in his core academic classes and is still determined to raise them even higher. Mr. Norwell is proud of Brendan's progress and is looking forward to seeing you climb to even higher heights. It's students like Brendan that make Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Brendan. Norwood Middle School Rising Star students for May are Corey Hill. Corey, are you able to make it? Corey Hill is a rising star for the middle school, and as an eighth grader at the middle school, Corey makes it his personal goal to demonstrate all of the school's pride and peace builder characteristics in the way he's always willing to help others. Corey is an exemplary student, and as a member of ATP and honors classes at the middle school, he consistently combines his academic talents with his intense motivational drive and stamina to excel in everything he does. In addition, Corey has set some short and long-term goals for himself. He plans to earn straight As all throughout middle school and successfully graduate high school with a class of 2022. Norwood Middle School is expecting great things from Corey Hill in the future, and it's people like Corey that make Norwood Middle School a Hall of Fame school and Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Corey. Anna Martinez Gomez. Anna, are you here tonight? They must all be in Washington, D.C. with the eighth graders. Anna has shown exemplary behavior in and out of the classroom. Anna has committed herself to academics where she currently holds a 4.0. Recently, Anna was inducted into the Norwood Middle School chapter of the National Junior Honor Society, in which she has worked tirelessly to maintain the society's core values of scholarship, leadership, service, and character. Over the past several months, Anna has taken part in a variety of activities that range from cheerleading for boys' basketball to helping in the community, all while maintaining academic excellence. As you can see, Anna embodies what it means to be a Norwood Indian, and it's all these reasons why we believe that Anna is a rising star. Congratulations, Anna. From Sharpsburg Elementary, from the month of April, she was not able to be with us just last month, Skylar Mullins. Is Skylar here? Skylar, come on down. We want to recognize you. Skylar is a very eager and enthusiastic learner. She puts forth her best effort in all that she does throughout the day. Skylar is an avid learner and seeks out ways to learn outside the classroom and the school day. Due to her effort and drive to learn, Skylar has made strong growth this year in reading, writing, and math. When asked to help, Skylar is such a team player and shows initiative to help others during class. She's a model for others, and she works hard to be kind and a safe learner at all times. Skylar enjoys learning, and the first-grade teachers love her. They are so thankful to have worked with her this year and are excited to continue to grow with her. They are looking for big things out of Skylar in the future. It's students like Skylar that make Norwood City Schools great. Congrats to you. Ariana Demeinges. Is it Ariana or Ariana?
Ariana.
Ariana. She's a kindergartner, come on down, who has grown so much academically. She's a hard worker and listener who comes to school with a smile and ready to learn. She is reading and writing and participates in all activities. Ariana is very kind and helpful to her peers and adults. She's a great role model. Her teachers say she's been a pleasure to have in class. She's ready for first grade. It is students like Ariana that make Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Ariana. Ivory Marshall. Ivory? Ivory is also a kindergarten student exhibiting great excellence this school year. She continues to be a joy to have in class as she comes into school ready to learn each and every day. She has made such great gains this year becoming a young reader. She's kind and respectful to her peers. She's always willing to help her friends. She's a classroom helper, and she likes to dispense and collect materials for lessons activities. Her teachers are confident that she will soar in the first grade. Her good-heartedness is very contagious when you're around her, and it's students like Ivory that make Norwood City Schools great. Norwood View Elementary School Rising Stars for the month of May are Natalie Avila. Natalie? Natalie is very kind and caring, who is always friendly and helpful to other students and adults. Natalie has maintained outstanding grades all year and is a model student for the positive culture that Norwood, at Norwood View. Natalie's favorite subject in school is art. Her goal is to someday become an art teacher at Norwood View. Teachers are certain that Natalie will be a success at whatever profession she chooses. They say congratulations to Natalie for the well-deserved recognition, and it's students like Natalie that make Norwood City Schools great. The fifth-grade team at Norwood View would like to nominate Parker Cianciolo. Cianciolo. Parker practiced with me how to say his name. Cianciolo. He is an exceptional student who does amazing work in both Ms. Gregg and Ms. Grossman's classroom and in reading, math, and science in the fifth-grade classrooms. Parker comes to school every day smiling and eager to learn. He's the first person who raises his hand to answer questions and contribute to the classroom discussion. He never complains and is always ready to take part in all classroom activities. Parker is internally motivated. He pushes himself and is clever, creative, and highly intelligent. He's a good friend to everyone and is always a peace builder. Therefore, with great pleasure, the entire fifth-grade team of teachers at Norwood View wants to honor Parker Cianciolo. It's students like Parker that make Norwood City Schools great. Williams Avenue Schools Rising Star students for May are Jakari Cunningham. Jakari? Not only has Jakari grown academically this year, but he has grown socially to become a great friend to all, teachers and students alike. Jakari has worked incredibly hard this year to get himself ready for first grade, and it shows. He loves reading to his peers and, as well, writing, and then sharing it with his peers. Jakari tries to put his peers' needs before his own, often going out of his way to ask a friend if they need help or if there is anything that he can do better to support them. He's a great role model and a champ. When asked in an interview, Jakari said his favorite food is noodles, and he wants to be a police officer when he grows up. It's students like Jakari that make Norwood City Schools great. Our next student cannot be with us tonight because he's with a sixth-grade trip at COSI, but we still want to read about Ethan Stout. Ethan has an awesome personality. He never seems to need to show off and is comfortable with who he is. He is friendly, polite, thoughtful, and diligent. He approaches every task in school with eagerness to learn and a great attitude. Ms. Dilly, in particular, notices his thoughtful approach to his work and his ability to produce art far and above a typical elementary school level. Ethan and his siblings have been a great part of Williams Avenue family for actually several years now, and it is their pleasure, as well as mine, to close out this year with a special recognition for Ethan. It's students like Ethan that make Norwood City Schools great. Congratulations, Ethan. Okay, we need to take a picture, and you need to get your hands shake by board members. So parents, this will be a photo opportunity for you, but I want you to know, Ms. Havlin, will do a good job and share that photo with you also. We like to put these photos on our website as well as... Congratulations. Congratulations, Brendan. You are awesome. Do you want us to sweep the floor? I do want to see your hands. If you have a second, Brian, could you scoot up a little bit and slide down a little bit? Almost like just a little more. All of them. And then this, can you just go down? And then go up. And then you guys just scoot down. And then you guys just go up. Big smile. Okay, ready? One, two, three. Let me try it one more time. One, two, three. Perfect. All right. Congratulations to all the rising stars. So, Brandon, would you can follow Ms. Havlin out into the lobby, and she'll take more photos than will likely go in the newspaper? And thank you so much.
I can't lump up each separate options. I just want to make sure.
And I didn't realize that I was only able to hold the report. I turned it off my recorder. That's the only option.
Yes.
Was that right? Hold up, pull the phone. That's okay. You were pulling up your report on the phone, and I realized...
For what?
I was, I was, I figured you were pulling up your report.
Oh, I was, no, I was pulling up the students that did the eighth, or the middle school. This is eighth grade, is correct. I wanted to acknowledge them at the beginning of the education report for what they did today. Oh, they're in my superintendent report. But that's okay. You can do that. You sure can do it. Yeah, that's fine. I wanted to get their names right, so I pulled up their... I think it's Norwood. I believe it's linked through, it's linked on the Norwood Strong page, I think. Another page as well.
Next item on our agenda is the Education Committee Report. Amber Ballard?
Thank you, Madam President. Before I get started with the education approval items, I just wanted to recognize three very unique students who had an opportunity this weekend with the trip to Washington, D.C. Kenzie Sickinger, Olivia Perry, and Nate Canada. They were selected among many, many student applicants to lay the wreath at Arlington National Cemetery, and those students got to do that today. So sitting on the National Memorial right now is a wreath with our name on it, Norwood Middle School. So I'm really proud of those students, and I just want to make sure that that is out there, and congratulations to the students. All right, first up is item 4.1. We have approval for the Hamilton County Educational Service Center 2018 and 19 Service Agreement. May I have a motion?
Do you make the motion?
I can go ahead and make the motion, too.
Okay, all right. First, by Amber. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 4.3 is the approval of adoption of English Language Arts IV through V, also Wonders Balance and through McGraw-Hill Education. I'll go ahead and motion for that one.
We have a motion for approval from Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 4.4, approval of the 2018-2019 Elementary K-6 Handbook. Also a motion?
Motion by Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 4.4, approval of the 2018-2019 Elementary K-6 Handbook. Also a motion?
Motion by Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 4.3 is the approval of adoption of English Language Arts IV through V, also Wonders Balance and through McGraw-Hill Education. I'll go ahead and motion for that one.
We have a motion for approval from Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. Item 4.4, approval of the 2018-2019 Elementary K-6 Handbook. Also a motion?
Motion by Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion?
I just wanted to clarify for the, the handbooks have been updated with, with the new safety procedures, correct?
All right, that's it for me.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Ballard, a second by Mr. Faulkner. Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. All right. Item 4.5, approval of the 2018-2019 Preschool Handbook. I'll also motion.
Motion by Ms. Ballard. Second?
I'll second.
Second. Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. All right. Item 4.5, approval of the 2018-2019 Preschool Handbook. I'll also motion.
Motion by Ms. Ballard. Second?
I'll second.
Second. Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes. All right, and final item is 4.6, approval of Special Education Service Contract, fiscal year 2018, fiscal year 2019. All motion?
We have a motion for approval by Ms. Ballard. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard?
Yes.
Atwood?
Yes.
Faulkner?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Scott Dracy?
Yes.
Okay, on to item 5, which is personnel. Dr. Sabo?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a number of recommendations for 5.01. Number 1 and 2, administrative contracts.
Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a number of recommendations for 5.01. Number one and two, administrative contracts. Number three, a construction supervisor/consultant contract. Oh, am I off? Can you just get number two? Oh, okay. Sorry. Number four, resignation. Number five, personnel, just noting that they are in continuing contracts for 2018/2019. Continued personnel noting that they are on their third one-year contract for 2018/2019, and then noting personnel on their second one-year contract for 2018/2019, and noting further that personnel on their first year contract for 2018/2019. And those are new hires. Number six is a library aide. Number seven is childcare leave for next school year, 2018/2019. And then, of course, a certified supplemental contract. And then, number nine, you'll notice pupil activity contracts. That concludes my recommendations for personnel.
All right, we have a motion for approval of employment, items one through nine.
I'll make the motion for approval.
Motion by Mr. Atwood. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Faulkner. Any discussion? All right, please call the roll.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Next item is the Policy Committee. Mr. Atwood.
Thank you, Madam President. With the Board's approval, I'd like to make a motion for the first reading of the following revisions to the policies. Those include the evaluation of professional staff, the evaluation of professional staff administrators, the criminal records check, evaluations of professional staff Ohio Teacher Evaluation System, evaluation of professional staff administrators, both professional and support, suspension and termination of professional staff members, professional staff hiring, support staff recruiting, posting of vacancies, hiring part-time and substitute professional staff employees, part-time, temporary, and substitute staff employment, support staff assignments and transfers, suspension, demotion, termination of support staff members, career technical education, and the college credit plus policy. All of those are going to be receiving their first reading, and those revisions are going to be posted on our website for everybody to take a look at in depth.
Okay, all right, so we have a motion for the first reading of the policies. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Ballard. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Atwood.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Item seven, Building and Grounds Committee Report. Mr. Bryant.
Yes, Madam President. With the Board's approval, I'd like to make a motion for item seven, one through seven, for approval for use of facilities. It's 7.01, use of facilities, one through seven.
All right, we have a motion for approval of the use of facilities, items one through seven. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Bryant.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. Item eight is the Finance Committee Report. Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. By recommendation of committee, I'd like to make a motion for the approval of item 801, approval of the five-year forecast, and 802, financial records, the FINSUM/CHECK REG, the APPSUM, and then the monthly treasures report.
We have a motion for approval of the 8.01, approval of the five-year forecast, and 8.02, financial reports. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Item 8.03, by recommendation of committee, I make a motion for the approval. This is for the Financial Committee Report, approval of the County Auditor's Estimate Resources and Appropriations spreadsheet.
All right, we have a motion for approval to approve the County Auditor Estimated Resources and Appropriations spreadsheet. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Atwood. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Item 8.04, by recommendation of committee, I make a motion to approve the resolution accepting the amounts and rates.
All right, 8.04, we have a motion for approval of resolution accepting amounts and rates. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
And finally, 8.05, by recommendation of committee, I make a motion for the approval of the construction budget updates.
All right, we have a motion for approval of the construction budget update. May I have a second?
I'll second. Somebody.
I'll second.[1317.26][1317.26][laughing] Please, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Madam President, that concludes the financial report.
All right, thank you. The next item is Hearing of the Public. I do not have any requests. Item 10 are the Superintendent's Report. Dr. Sabo.
Thank you, Madam President. We have wonderful news to share. The dream project orchestrated by our eighth grade Spanish teacher, Mrs. Kubash, is now on display at the Cincinnati Museum Center. Several students drew images of Martin Luther King Jr., while a few more students helped translate his speech into Spanish. And additionally, the display is comprised of dreams written by our seventh and eighth graders, and the student work will be on display for a week in the temporary exhibit hall, third floor in the educational area. So, a special thanks to Mrs. Kubash for her leadership on that effort. Construction is underway at the middle school, formerly known as our high school, and our permit arrived over spring break, and we are on schedule as of today, and it will be ready for teachers and students, at least the West Wing will, on August the 17th. This week, our eighth graders are enjoying an educational trip in Washington DC. So, a select group of our students laid a wreath today at the Tomb of the Unknown Soldier, and we're so very proud, so please check our website out for photos on that. We appreciate the Board's support and the ability to take our eighth graders on such educational trips, and special thanks go to our teachers for organizing that opportunity. On Tuesday, May the 22nd, that's just next week, the Class of 2018 will graduate at the Centos Center on the campus of Xavier University. To begin the ceremony, the Class of 1968, which are celebrating their 50th anniversary of graduation, will be shaking the hands of our graduates as they make their entrance to the graduation floor. Also new this year, we have a section for our teachers, kindergarten through 12th grade, to sit in in honor of their efforts toward leading up to this journey, and we're so proud of their work as well. So, we're also really glad and very excited for this Class of 2018, and we wish them much more success. I want to let everyone know that to attend, tickets are not necessary, and graduation will begin promptly at 7:30. Lastly, the community will come together on Tuesday, July the 24th, for the Norwood Day Parade. The Norwood Chamber of Commerce has announced the theme as Norwood Development Soaring to New Heights, and the grand marshal will be David Main of HCDC. The parade will begin at 7:00 PM, and the following day will be Norwood Day at Old Coney on the 25th. And this concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Sabo.
Thank you.
Next item is the Great Oaks Report. Mr. Faulkner.
Thank you, Madam President. Just three items to report on today. First, at the past meeting, they approved the auditor certification for the 2.7 mil levy that'll be on the ballot for November of 2018 for the Oaks. Second, they've been working on their policy updates, and it's been a long process for them, but they have been working to get those updated and ready to go. And then, finally, the adult workforce development. They've got... They heard their numbers from the third quarter out, and I wanted to share the numbers because they're kind of impressive, I felt. 4,106 full-time or part-time adult students at the Oaks. 1,426 adult students receive services such as counseling, testing, and financial aid, and 11,611 adults used the Oaks for either meetings or other purposes. I thought that was a good use of the Oaks, and it was nice for them to share that information. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. The next item is Avenues for Success Report. Ms. Amber Ballard.
Thank you, Madam President. So, I wanted to congratulate Avenues for the last couple of events that they've hosted. They've been very successful. We had their spring cleaning event, which was a local community-involved drive to collect donation items. They also hosted a wheelchair basketball game here in the gym, and that was well-received by the community as well, and I look forward to seeing them host that again. And their biggest event of the year, which was held last weekend, was the Glow Event here out on our lawn with the hot air balloons. We had local vendors, games, all kinds of neat things. They also kind of lumped in the end-of-year banquet, which I got some feedback from several of our vendors and community members that said they really loved seeing the stage there and the recognition of our students and our volunteers and all the people that really went into it. So, that may be something that Laura wants to maybe continue, I hope, because it got really good feedback, and it also got a lot more visibility for our students being congratulated in that role. I have not received a number from how much Glow raised just yet. Hopefully, I'll have that report for you guys next month.
Thank you. Next item is the Legislative Report. Mr. Atwood.
Thank you, Madam President. With the previous month leading up to this being primaries, there has been very little activity going on in Columbus on the legislative side. I would expect now that primaries are over that some activity would pick up coming into June and July before election season starts, so nothing right now.
All right, thank you. Next item is Public Comment. Do we have any public comments? Meeting notification. Our meeting notification for the committee meeting on Tuesday, June 12th, 2018, at 5:30 in the boardroom at 2132 Williams Avenue, and our regular meeting for Thursday, June 21st, 2018, 6:00 PM, boardroom. May I have a motion for approval of the future meetings?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mr. Atwood. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Atwood.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Ballard.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. The next item are items removed for separate consideration.
There were none.
There were none, yes, okay. Then, item 13 is Executive Session. We will enter into executive session for...
Number one.
Number one, in accordance with ORC 12122G1, the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official, or the investigation of charges or complaints against a public employee, official, licensee, or regulated individual. May I have a motion to go into executive session?
Motion.
First by Ms. Ballard.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Bryant. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Ballard.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Atwood.
Yes.
Faulkner.
Yes.
Scott Dracy.
Yes. We will be going into executive session at 6:41.[1795.82]